Gentlemen, it's six P M. We'll call the meeting to.
We'll add allegiance to the United States of America to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, glittery and strong.
We'll call four acre is absent. Ms. Edler.
Present.
Ms. Schaefer.
Present.
Mr. Campbell.
Present.
Mr. Fordice.
Present.
For approval of the agenda.
Motion to. Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Move right along on number five, citizen hearing and other communications. Uh, Polk County Sheriff happens to pop in. Uh, counsel as always, if you're okay with it, we'll pause, take a report from him. I know we've got a report in the package, but if he's got anything to add. Uh, on to letter B, Scott Dre has communicated he would not be here this evening. However, he said he might have some words of wisdom to share with us. Katie, do you have that?
I can uh, read his email here. So uh, Scott said due to an unforeseen event in our organization, I had to leave for work trip a little bit early. Um, the fire department responded to twenty-one calls for service this past month. Seven of them were rescue, public assist. Twelve were medical and two were fire. A couple of our members have began the process of installing the new light bars on our rigs and they look fantastic. We're continuing to make some improvements to our fleet as well as perform necessary mechanical repairs with the assistance of Jerry's Garage, a huge benefit for us. Scott.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, letter C, public comments, anything not on the agenda, any public comments this evening?
Yes, Ron Adams here. Uh, out here at the new multi-purpose buildings, are they gonna put ditches in on the north? Are they gonna leave that so the snow blows up? So when it's winged back, we got a ridge there and then it blows snow on the road. They've got a lot of dirt work done, but it looks like they're not gonna have any ditch on the north side. Did anybody look at any of the plans to see if there's a ditch there?
I know that the plans were looked over by planning and zoning. We can re-review those and then double check.
Well, I'm just curious, you surely drove past it and noticed there's no ditch there.
Yes, yes.
I would just curious, be sure they're gonna put one in. And the second thing Jill, uh, you deal in real estate stuff, maybe you could talk to your finance people and help out the people on uh, uh, convenience store into there to see if they can't push along the state funding.
Um, I don't, I could try, I don't know what.
What can you just ask some questions about?
Right. The gas stations are a lot different than other course property or even other, you know, real estate properties such as houses and and land and stuff like that. Um, I know Katie's been trying to touch base with them. We actually haven't really heard much back from them. So it would be helpful if we could just get a response and then work on from there, but we're not getting a response.
I think yeah, Brad might touch on it a little bit.
I talked to him today. I'll fill it, I'll fill in later.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Any other public comments this evening? Sir?
Oh, yes. Um, also with the new construction that's going out for the whatever that building is that they're putting out there. Could someone maybe talk to the construction crews about their parking? They, the other day, they had, I don't know, six, seven vehicles in the park. Get far off pavement. And if there's a semi coming the other direction, that makes kind of a tight hole to go through. So plus, I don't think you can legally park that close to a highway. I noticed they put some rock down, put, put another temporary patch of rocks for their workers to park on.
Yeah, I had noticed it the one day myself. I hadn't noticed it since. I don't know if it was because of the greening, it was because of the moisture. I don't recall had it rained or not that day, but I did take note of that as well. So.
You just.
Nope, I understood, understood. Sir understood. Yep, yep. Always a good reminder to slow down and pay attention. So. Any other public comments this evening? Set of the public comment session closed then. On to number six, the consent agenda. Uh, a lot in here again this time. Does anybody on council have anything they'd like to pull out, discuss, any questions on anything, any clarification on anything? We have Michelle here probably to hear about if her permit's going to be approved or not for sales.
Would have been.
That would be, if I'm not mistaken, that would tie along with the uh, the fall.
Small town.
Yeah, small rocks event.
Just wanted to make note of, I and and first on, I think it's a great opportunity to continue growing the city's leadership staff. Um, those events are used pretty heavily in different arenas. And I know city government has been wading into them a lot more in the last few years as well. It's something we actually looked at in the past, having some of our city leaders attend, which so that's nice to see in there.
Did you mean L, Mr. Fordice?
Sorry, L, I didn't scroll down far enough.
Your finance, I want to make sure I was on it right later.
Uh, and then on, and annual exam R F P. I like the idea of getting that on the books and getting the, the funding secured for that. Getting those paid for in advance as opposed to kind of ad hocing that every year. So I appreciate your proactivity on getting that taken care of, getting that secured. The R F P look good?
No further questions. There's nothing else. Can we get a motion in a second?
Approved. Motion to approve consent agenda is submitted. Second.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice. Uh, move right along on to seven business items. Letter A, resolution twenty-two-five dash four-two. Resolution approving pay us but number four for the water systems improvements. Well, number four project under contract between the city of Elkhart, Flip's Page and Gingrich Well and Pump Service LLC.
New Forrest tonight?
Yes. Yep, I'm Vince Driscoll. Yep, I'm filling in for Forrest while he's gone. Um, that's one where the two existing wells that were feeding the old system were, we did some modifications, so they will now work for the new, just changes in. You know, we're pumping to different levels and through a different filtration system, so they had to kind of swap them out, make some changes. Um, it was a kind of a long lead time thing, so it kind of sat dormant for months. Um, until now we were ready to do it. And so that was kind of the last thing on that contract. So that's what we were recommending payment for.
Also questions, comments? Take it away.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash four-two.
Second. Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Letter B, resolution twenty-two-five dash four-three, resolution approving uh, financial acceptance of water systems improvements, well number four project under contract between the city of Elkhart and Gingrich Well and Pump Service LLC.
Right again, so those were the last two things they needed to do. Yep. Um, and that is a separate contract from the building, you know, the treatment plant itself. Uh, that one's close. We're getting a lot closer there. Um, but just so you know, they are separate. There's still just little miscellaneous things we're doing there, but as far as we see it, the well is, yeah, the contract's complete.
So that's where the five percent retained inch percentage comes in as, as held until completion.
Yep, yep. And that'll be thirty-one days, I believe is, yeah.
Motion to approve resolution uh, twenty-two-five dash four-three.
Second. Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
Letter C, resolution twenty-two-five dash four-four. Resolution approving pay us with number four for the Prairie Point Park Pond Seeding Project under contract between city of Elkhart and Emmons and Olive Olivier Resources Incorporated. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
And that one, um, I wasn't super involved with that. I did talk to Jordan Kappas. He said that he, um, you know, went through the site with Ron. Um, and you know, they both agreed it was seeding's been done. Um, it sounds like they've come back and done a few cleanup items for it and taking care of it and been been on top of it as far as I understand. So he had no issue with bringing that to you.
So is that reseeding the already seeded spot?
I think, I do think they came back and did some reseed.
Yeah, so they made a final, final trip in May um, to do it that all. And then the city did kind of inspect it again. And we did request one more thing and they came back and knocked out some more natives or grass, so.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-four. Second.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell. Fordice.
Aye.
Uh, letter D, resolution twenty-two-five dash four-five, resolution approving final acceptance of the Prairie Point Park Pond Seeding Project. Did I just read that one?
No, it's just.
No, this is just the acceptance.
Yep, 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 yep. I'm sorry. We'll, we'll try this again here. Uh, let's, let's see here. Resolution twenty-two-five dash four-five, a resolution approving final acceptance of Prairie Point Park Pond Seeding Project under contract between city of Elkhart. Emmons and, no, I did read that. We're on the E, aren't we?
No.
Uh, from D here, good. C was.
Yep, yep, yep. I'm sorry.
Approving the pass.
It's, I'm very, yes, I apologize. The wording is very similar and it's throwing me off. So everything I've just said, Olivier Resources Incorporated, aye, go.
Yep.
My apologies.
That's okay, right? So that, the item before was the, the payment, and then this is, you know, acceptance of the project. So um, similar to the well, this would begin the thirty-one day period. Uh, after that, you release the five percent retained age. Uh, like I said, Jordan and Ron walked it and I think it's, everyone agrees that they have met the contract. So this would be, yeah, final acceptance of it.
That happens again, you might get to take over. Just be prepared.
You're gonna honor your place with.
Tell me about it. Alrighty. Counsel questions, comments? Take it away.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash four-five.
Second.
Edler.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice. Okay, just right on letter E now, correct?
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
Sorry.
No problems.
Appreciate it.
Just welcome, please.
On to letter E, resolution twenty-two-five dash four-six, a resolution approving and adopting a revenue purpose statement for expenditure of fee revenues from proposed electric and natural gas franchise fees.
So based on our discussion at the last meeting, um, I put together revenue purpose statement that outlines the multiple purposes that um, the city can spend the franchise fee revenue on. Um, I don't know if you've had a chance to review those. But if it looks sufficient to you guys, I would recommend approving it and then we can set the hearing uh, to look, to uh, review the amended ordinances.
Also, do you have any questions or concerns or comments on this? Just skimming back through it myself. I know we've talked a lot about it in depth. We had a good discussion in the last meeting, I believe it was, so.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash four-six.
Second. Edler. Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice.
Aye.
And then letter F. Sam say a different pause for dramatic effect. Good enough. I always let the train go through, so. Uh, resolution number twenty-two-five dash four-seven, a resolution setting a public hearing date on an amendment to the Elkhart Code ordinances with respect to electric and national ga- natural gas franchise fees.
Um, so this is the next step. Once the, once we have reviewed and okayed the revenue purpose statement, we're gonna set a date for the August eighteenth meeting. Which is where we will hold a public hearing. Um, that will be published in the paper. And then following the public hearing, you guys can uh, do one reading of the ordinance or you can waive the second and third readings and pass it at one as well. Um, in talking to our service providers, it sounds like once we have all this documentation done, it'll take around forty-five months for the fees to actually be implemented. Uh, just because they have a, a large influx of like local governments that are doing this right now. Um, so that is where the lead pack comes in.
Counsel questions, comments? If not, somebody take it away and set the date officially.
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two-five dash forty-seven, public uh, hearing day will be August eighteenth, city council.
Time and location?
Eighteen hundred here.
Second.
There a diner in there? Edler.
Six o'clock.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Fordice. Uh, it's number eight. Discussion items, Memorial Park Ball Field rental policy.
Yes, so I wanted to uh, bring this for discussion because I've received a increased interest in renting the ball fields at Memorial Park. Uh, so we have one organization, three Ts, they're currently developing in town. Um, they have reserved a few dates this fall already. Um, and then I received another inquiry last week about interest in renting the fields as well. So I just thought I'd get your guys' thoughts on developing a policy, whether you would like to implement rental fees. Um, there are a few questions I listed out in in my memo that I'm kind of looking for feedback on if you are wanting to put a policy in place. Um, so just kind of looking to discuss that and see if I can uh, answer some of the questions I have uh, to develop a policy.
What does Ron and Rick think about the?
Um, I've talked to Ron a little bit. The only thing that really concerns them, you know, is the after hours. If there's gonna be rentals on nights and weekends. Are we willing to, you know, pay overtime hours to go out there to do that work?
Is that, is that something that like, the fields could be graded like the next day?
And maybe that is.
The lights have to be manually turned on and off, so that would be something that.
We got a drop box, like if there's a key or something they have to bring back or something that turns the lights on and off to me.
Yeah, we can certainly deliver the key to them. I just wanted to make sure that was okay with you guys. Rather than sending out an employee to do that. Um, Ron, they have not dragged the fields before. Um, so that's something we have to talk with the guys about to see if their interest is, is it, okay. Uh, I just wanted to nail some details down before I put, put a rental agreement in front of you. Cause it's gonna, I'm gonna have to discuss some details with the baseball softball association as well. Because a lot of their volunteers put time in for the maintenance of that field too. So I just wanted to make sure we are on the same page. We wanted to put something in place, um, just to get some feedback.
And a segue on that, we have a member of the baseball softball association here who had his hand raised, so I'll allow a quick question or comment from Mr. Adams.
We had an agreement back years ago. That's why the board was set up because council didn't want to do anything with it. The problem is if they do not drag the diamonds when they get done. If it gets wet, then there's a problem with the east diamond. It'll puddle water and it will not settle off. And then if you don't do it right at the right time and get it, then you can get a hump in it or you can not get the whole thing level. As far as giving them a key, that's fine and dandy, but keys can be duplicated. So you can have fifteen hundred keys out for the lights and some joker coming by there at midnight some night and turns the lights on, locks the padlocks. Who's gonna get up, go down, turn them off? That's one reason they limited that end of it.
I agree.
And they get arrangement with somebody to pick it up. To turn it on and be there when they turn them off or unlock them. When they got done, they shut them off and locked it. If you get a dozen keys out, that's the same way, same way the lawnmower down there belongs to Memorial Park Board in there. And if you're gonna let every joke little run it, then that's gonna increase somebody's liability drastically.
So are these gonna be night games? Is that what we're talking about?
So right now we have three Ts, us reserved it for night, for evening practices. And so how late do they, do you know how late they expect?
Nine, ten o'clock.
They, um, they did tell me that they would end practice early so they didn't have to use the lights. Because that was one of the things I was trying to figure out, is if they would need the lights. But that's another question that I, I wanted, you know, I want us to decide on, are we going to allow games? Are we going to allow tournaments? Just practice?
Can council like volunteer time to pick up the keys, like maybe one of us will be in charge or have a schedule where that really for that month. Council, that way you don't have to pay Ron or Rick and then somebody from city council be there to make sure the lights are shut off and.
I love that idea.
Is that okay?
If you want to volunteer.
I would volunteer my time. If anybody else wants to, that's great. If they don't want him, that's fine also, but I would volunteer my time.
And I'm the ditto. I am more than happy to help any way that I can. I know if I'm busy on and off, depending on what season we've got going on at the shop, but you know, I'm happy to help out wherever I can. If it's a matter of keys, you know, if Steph's possibly available, if we would entrust her on that, she could pick up.
She's on the first, so.
Yeah, she's on the first order.
Yeah, that's fair. That's fair.
Really, if you unlock them, all they gotta do is lock them. The second thing we run into, we had, you'll have to discuss with Tom. I'm sure you remember Sonati's dad does, his dad was chairman, but you have to make sure they have some sort of liability if they're gonna rent it.
Yeah.
There's a fine line on it, just like with the bikes, bicycles down there. You can't decline them use of the park, but if you okay lose use of the park, then the city's low. There's a fine line on it. So that's why when we had it set up, I forget what it was. It wasn't a great deal in there. And then you gotta figure out on your rental deal, what you can do about the schools. Cause you know, really they're an outside entity too. So.
Yeah, that was another question I had is, you know, with A E S Little League and then the school teams, are we gonna give them preference to use the fields?
Well, then maybe if it's this fall, they'd be done with baseball softball anyways, right?
Someone playing the fall league is a thing and traveling leagues. There are a lot down here on Saturdays and Sundays.
If the baseball teams find out we've got a field for rent, given how tight it is for field space, you won't have to advertise it. They will be coming to you, so.
If you rent it, they will come, something like that?
Is it something that it'd be?
Is that straight art?
We used to have a group come up from Altoona all the time and use it.
I think eventually, yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was looking at some other metro fields. They charge like forty dollars an hour.
I don't think we have to be like huge, but I think there should be some kind of fee that will benefit the, you know, ball field and help pay for things we need.
Check with Ankeny, check with Altoona. I know Ames does it and through there Nevada does it. I could check with them and see what they get out of the use of it because they charge a lot of softball teams to use.
Okay.
And one thing that we need to consider as well, and I can't recall if it's, if it's on your list here or not, and but the, the overall condition of the fields and stuff. I know we brought some more lime in. I don't know if those were spread on both fields, if that was just the, just the east field. It wasn't all three, okay. Uh, you know, as far as the overall condition, we've been concerned about that and maybe getting even more lime in and then the the bleachers or if, if, if the concessions were to be used during that time, I don't know if they would or not for practice, probably not, but just, just everything all encompassing that's there with the, the state that it's in. Do we, going back to the liability, do we feel comfortable renting it? I mean, I'm all for it, but added expenses, added, added
Right.
so many more things than just obviously finished value to, to consider here.
Three Ts, that's a, that's an organization that's gonna have a building on here. So I'd assume they'd have some sort of insurance.
Yeah.
With them, right? But like, are we gonna rent it to like a family reunion place? Like, what kind of insurance do we have to charge for them?
To rent any or use any of the school facilities, like the gyms or anything like that, private teams are required to carry liability insurance. And it's, it's like a hundred and twenty bucks to get it.
Or about like a team that wanted to have a league, slow pitch softball, you know, what we'd have to do?
Well, I think the core question that she wants us to answer tonight is do we want to rent it? Yes or no? And then if so, to who and for what? And I think in the short term, the demand would just be some practices this, this fall, not necessarily a bunch of leagues and games and and talking with Jeff Pardon, the heavy use seasons, that's when A E S is out there and we have it every single night for A E S. So I don't think it would ever get to the point for leagues and things like that right now, but maybe after some field improvements and things like that. So I think the main thing is do we want to rent it? If so, how much? And then types of use, we just limit it to practice for the first year or so till we assess the field quality, we can assess the use.
Incorrect, just forward thing for everything else all involved.
Um, and then, you know, he mentioned they didn't think they would need the lights. By the second week of October, it's dark by five fifteen. So if they think they're gonna get much practicing in in October, they're gonna need the lights, right? We used it for football a couple of years ago, the west, east, yeah, east field. We had to turn the lights on at five o'clock. She couldn't see anything. Uh, even with the new lights, you're still gonna need them. And then obviously scheduling priority be A E S would be given scheduling priority or anything that was by the softball baseball association. Um, and then as far as helping out, yeah, I think we'd all be willing to cycle through parks. I know a bunch of parks people would be willing to cycle through, make sure we're not passing out keys. I agree with Ron. Yep. But I think the main thing is do we want to rent it? Yes or no?
Yes.
Um, and then if so, like the fee structure, do we want to mirror an hourly thing or do we want to just say you get it from X to X and it's a flat fee? I'm, I'm in favor of doing hourly.
Yeah.
Um, but I also think we need to restrict it. I would prefer we have a cutoff time of like nine P M. In the summers so that we aren't worrying about somebody running up there at ten or eleven o'clock at night because somebody wanted to run it extra.
Yeah.
If you guys would be okay with that. Um, so scheduling permitted and then it would be until nine P M. Like you gotta be off the field, lights are getting shut off. Whoever, whoever volunteers that night, we're, we're locking them up at nine P M. If that's the case, because the bathrooms will need to be locked too. Obviously, it wouldn't just be shutting the lights off. Um, what do you guys think about that? Is that all right?
Yes.
Who will unlock the bathrooms next morning?
Say that again.
Who will unlock the bathrooms the next morning?
Well, are they normally locked at night? Now that I think about it. Now, as I said, maybe they're not locked at night.
Twenty-four seven, as the sheriff, they use a lot.
Then we'll just leave it unlocked. Um.
It's convenient while I'm owning the church too.
I think. I think types of use then would be limited to um, crackles and then we would just put on their approved organizations. So even if it's a, you know, a five line, uh, what's the word I'm looking for here? Application form. Name of the organization, proof of insurance, contact information. You get the point, right? Like pay details in advance, credit card number, whatever that is. And then we, you can approve those or you can work with parks to whoever you want to do that.
Yeah.
That way we have some type of formal application process and people aren't just showing up ad hoc.
Brad, I heard you suggest like an ending time. But do you want to do like blocks of time? Cause like, you know, if it does become popular, I could see.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Saturdays, Sundays, maybe Q three out and your teams might want to come in.
Yeah.
Saying, well, the new to three blocks already block used, but the three to six, the six to nine.
We could start by hours and see what, how that works. And then if people are doing two hours and we don't see a lot of three or four, then yeah, it'd be fine. We could block it off. Um.
Yep, I will work on something and I'll probably work with Tom, Owen and Jeff Pardon a little bit, just to make sure we're all on the same page since they're active.
Just FYI, sorry to interrupt.
No, you're good.
FYI, the men's fast pitch league is talking about having another tournament. We're starting up another team.
Oh.
So if they do.
There we go.
They may not want to rent it in there, but if they have their tournament, it's, turns out to be a pretty big deal.
How often was the last time you did that?
Oh, mid-two thousands.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
In there, but they had guys here from Cleveland, Colorado and North Dakota and Minneapolis and had some down in South St. Louis and had them from all over the place in there. It was, there's people here from the festival.
It was a good fall.
Is it a twenties, is that next summer or are you thinking twenty-seven or?
No, they're thinking next summer.
Cause it wouldn't.
And I don't know, if you have one this fall or not, you're talking about. If nothing else, throwing off another game or two. So they may do it this fall.
Yeah.
In there.
Are they typically operating in the fall then or do they operate year round?
Summer, I do there and they start up the summer.
Uh, so after Little League is.
June.
Okay, yeah.
And there and they run clear through in there. Same way it's at Des Moines leagues.
Yeah, the, the big thing would be, the big thing on communication with that would be, probably it'll be in twenty-seven, but when we we've been talking about getting some funding for some ballpark upgrades and grants and things like that. We would want to make sure obviously we get plenty of time planned for it, but cause there would be some downtime on that field. Well, it gets resurfaced and the grass gets torn out. Yeah, so we got plenty of time there. Okay, I was just making sure.
It'll be two years downtime. We run into that, when they put the grass down on the west one, it could not do anything with it for two years.
Yeah, he said it would take, it, it seeds a lot quicker. Now, we, when we had Midwest field, we won't need to get into that tonight, but when Midwest field surf out there, it was, it was something they could get done in the fall and then it would be open by the time the Little League season rolled around in the spring with the way that it grows now. Again, pending if we get irrigation put in, all those things. That depends on funding, obviously, but my other question was gonna be as far as rentals and things like that. Um, up at the park that day, three Ts was here for the festival. I spoke with them quite a bit and he had mentioned doing some rentals and things like that. And we had talked more about a broader donation potentially to the Parks Foundation, um, or the Memorial Park Foundation, sorry. As opposed to renting it like an hourly rate, maybe like a bulk, like a bulk donation.
Okay.
For year one or bulk donation for year two, but we could go to hourly, you know what I mean? They, they may be amicable to a larger upfront amount, uh, to use for field improvements and things like that. Cause I saw in your report that there was some funding that was done, I won't steal your thunder on that, but for the backstop on the one.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Um, but things like that, we may be able to go to them with a specific project, i.e. roofs on the dugout or whatever event, making things up. Uh, but that was something that he had said they would have some interest in potentially.
Okay.
To avoid the whole paying for hourly rates, but they would still have to schedule just like everybody else.
Okay, good to know.
Yes.
Any other comments and discussion on ballfields? On to letter B, radar speed feedback science. Uh, on again, off again, subject for a while here, and we've got some more information on this month's go around. Uh. Katie, is there any other information you'd like to give to us or council, or do we just wanna dive into discussion? Do we still feel we want these, need these? Where, I know this has been kind of a project of our desire of mine, but how does everybody feel? Katie, do you have any information? Who wants to chime in?
I mean, I kind of played it all in the memo. I mean, um, if you decide to go move forward with installing one, the D O T prices are without a doubt, they make the most sense. Um, it just depends what size you, you would like, um. The only thing is I didn't know, you know, if we're successful in changing the speed limit, if we avoid that area. Placing one there, just wait it out, see what happens with that.
You can change the threshold on those, I'm pretty sure, like we're not gonna buy like a thirty mile an hour one and forever stays thirty mile an hour, I think you can change the threshold on that.
Did we get that speed or the traffic, sorry, Johnny?
And that's exactly what I was, we get that data back.
No, she emailed me today and said they are still like gathering slash figuring out what they need to do on their end.
Is that the last thing they have to do is that study just to extend it to the city town?
I've not heard a whole lot back from them, honestly.
They required that we do it and now they're taking their time on us with the information.
Yeah.
Speed of the government, yes.
For transparency purposes, we had a, uh, with the conversations of extending thirty mile an hour zone farther to the east, there was a traffic study done. I don't know if anybody had noticed a couple of weeks ago that the black bars that were going across a hundred and twenty-six, that's what that was for, to gather pertinent data that was required in order to move the thirty zone farther east, so. And as we just heard, we're still waiting for that information, that data to come back to us, so that's where we're at with that, so, sir.
Just a quick comment. I understand the concern with the, with the speed, do people drive through town faster than they should? Hell yes, I think everyone realizes that. And I know it's only a few thousand hours, but given how the city's finances currently are. Is this the best use of money right now? Because someone can smoke through there seventy mile an hour. You've got no way to enforce it.
So what it, what it does do is it's data collection for us as well.
I.
So that stuff that when we're doing our radar setups on a hundred and twenty-six, that's information that we can turn back around to Polk County Sheriff's Office and say, hey, I understand you guys are doing this at this at daytime, but here's the data that we're getting when you guys aren't here, which might drive more speed enforcement into town.
Just while we're out there, is it the best use of, how many thousand dollars?
Oh, and the whole point of the discussion, yes.
So with that being said, I did, you know, it seems to me like the majority of the complaints is on a hundred and twenty-six, not so much on grants. Um, maybe we start out on the one, on the east to west and then see how it goes and then go north south instead of doing all four at the same time.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I thought.
What is the difference in the price of permanent sign versus mobile?
Mobile, so the mobile signs we get from Polk County, there's only a.
I understand, but if the city was to buy one, what I'm getting at.
Ah.
Wait, if anybody checked on that, the kicker with it in there is because some of them have cameras in them.
Yeah.
And you can set it up and tell the clickers how many times it's over and everything, but then you can also use it on city streets.
Yeah.
Such as Main Street, when the bikes come through at seventy-five mile an hour. Then that guy can use it all over the place and it would be, you could either use it, use it on the east side, the west side, wherever a guy wanted to use it and move it or the city guys can move it around. And then if you ever wanna get rid of it, you can find them on good deals for sale, quite often.
No, and that's, that's a fair point. We don't have that data to answer that question because we hadn't considered that.
Had something.
No, and then that's.
Instead of putting a permanent one, I, I, I know permanent ones, yeah, all about that, but
Sure.
If a mobile one was just a couple thousand dollars more.
I was looking at the, one of the, which was this first company, it's in the Safe Pace, the Traffic Logics Science, and it looks like they've got a couple of different mobile ones on their website. They're pretty cool and, you know, this options, I didn't, you gotta request a quote and all that.
County had that, one of theirs up here, Whiteo, trying to slow down for construction.
I'd be more inclined, I think I'm, I'm kind of the odd one out on this one, say just don't know that it's gonna make that big a difference, um. And so to Tony's point, like I'm, I'm just not confident that spending the money is gonna give us the results we're looking for. The data collection is a, a good point. I would be more inclined to lean towards something like what Ron is discussing with the mobile unit. Um, because again, like we've had people complain about all over the place. And so that would give us the ability to move that around a little bit. And to your point, if we did decide we were getting a lot of good feedback and good data and we wanted to put some permanent ones in, then we could sell the mobile one and put that money toward um, some permanent ones. So I, I would be more inclined to get some more information about a mobile unit and lean toward that, that would make more sense to me. I just, I'm afraid without enforcement, it's gonna become a top score game.
Well, yeah, not, not only with the mobile unit, two ways to look at it, see if they lease them or they rent them for a short time, year, whatever, and they're let alone purchased, see which one would be the better deal. So if you can lease one for a year, X amount of dollars.
If you wanna volunteer and take on that project and, uh, do some homework on that, my public works guy, my parks lady, anybody?
I got it. I got it.
He's doing it right now.
Everything we're seeing is western coal here. Just show me the price.
Yeah, exactly. Does Ames have one?
They will.
Yeah.
You got a bumper hitch on your cricket?
I, I have no idea, I couldn't answer that question and that's, that's for another time, so. No, I mean, yeah, Mr. Campbell, if you're willing to do legwork on that.
It's just like Bill said, Iowa State has several of them up there, that's, the university has a ton of them.
But the difference is that they receive those through grants.
I understand that.
Safety, right?
Right, a guy, what I was getting at, if I contact one of them. They might be able to see me and they're getting done with it.
Yeah.
No, and that's a very fair point.
If you don't ask, you don't know. You slap a few times, but if you don't ask, I don't know.
Would it be worth looking for a grant for something like that?
I have more discussion probably upfront, but I think long run, yes, be it, be it a permanent, be it a mobile, be it whatever, I don't think that'd be a bad idea, so. But it just, I know, that's why it's not on the agenda to, to purchase or not, it's just, hey, let's talk about it, so.
I can totally check and see what's out there.
Cause you could even flip it as like if there has been talk of a school ever going in in here, like doing preemptive safety studies for when the school gets implemented.
Doesn't hurt to check, so I'll see if, I'll see if there's anything out there that's an opportunity.
I think Mr. Campbell has volunteered to kind of take that on, so one less thing for you to deal with, so. But feel free to work together and whatever you guys need to do, so. And if I can be of any assistance or anybody on council, please let us know. Awesome. Uh, on to number nine, uh, if we're done with the radar speed, no other comments, questions? So make sure, uh, the number nine code enforcement, uh, was, was Harrison planning on stepping in or?
He was still coming, but at six fifteen, but maybe he ran into something, I don't know.
Well, hopefully no damage, so. Thank you. Bad joke. Um, I know first round of, uh, I call it first round of code enforcement gone through, Katie, do you have any insight to share or? Or just?
Specifically, I don't think so.
No. No, but I know we didn't have them in the packet, so I'm not gonna openly discuss what the violations we did, didn't have or anything like that, so.
Okay, briefly discussed mine?
Like to?
Well, I just, I just had questions or I just was trying to brainstorm here.
Well, let, let me preface it with, we're not gonna problem solve as far as.
No.
Yeah.
Thinking, um, so the property we got sent was actually my grandpa's property, not my property, but it is like right next to my property, so I could see how you think that it is my property. Uh, we do have some trailers over there that are parked against the bushes, um, so you can't actually see the trailers there unless you're coming down the alley. And that's, and the only people that go down, down the alley is like people that live on that alley. So you really can't see them, um, my, our issue is, so there's four trailers there, we're actually gonna get rid of two of them, so we'll be down to two of them there. Um, but I could take all those trailers and I could essentially go end to end to end in the driveway from the garage to the street and it's gonna be a bigger eyesore than what it is now. So I'm just trying to brainstorm or see if there's anything that could be done and if we could work together, come to like common ground where we don't have to sell things to, you know, that could be a discussion another time.
Yeah, and that would be, that would be go back through, speak with Harrison and then we can set up a meeting or what have you.
So if I, so I would need to talk to Harrison and not just City.
We, everything is going back through, correct? If I'm wrong, but everything would go back through, if, if a resident, be it on council vehicles, whomever resident were to receive a violation, first step would be go back through Harrison, clarify if there are any questions there, then we could set up a meeting at that point, we can go, to go that route.
Uh, one, one question that was presented to me by, uh, Citizen was, um, during, uh, snow removal times, if their front yard, the only way to park off the street during a snow ordinance, which of the lesser two evils are we, are we looking at just to get vehicles off the road? So I, I know it's only, uh, July, but, uh, it'll be a, it'll be a question possibly, uh, coming up in the next few months.
I know public works expressed that concern to me as well because, you know, it's harder for them to maneuver around vehicles that are parked on the street during that time on this side of town, so, um. That could even, I mean, if we add that to our code, okay, we allow.
During a snow ordinance, this is non-existent, this on.
The same part of our conversation around this was exactly this, that we would come across these things where logic says, let's do this instead. This is all not set in stone already, so then we can make these amendments and and edit as we go, as long as people, once they're getting letters, start the discussion, start the conversation, you know, come with their valid points and that sort of thing and then, and then, yeah. Very possibly it makes sense to amend what we've got in place already, that, that's kind of the spirit of all of it.
The, the way that that situation was handled in the past was number one, if someone is parked in their yard during the summer or a snow ordinance or whatever. The only way they're gonna get a violation for that is if it's noticed on a day where the code enforcement is taking place. Number two. A notice of violation isn't a penalty, it's, it's a notice of a violation, so you have time to remedy that, so the odds of them staying in their yard during a snow emergency for weeks on end could happen where in Iowa it snows a lot. But more than likely within twenty-four to forty-eight hours, they have to move it back to the street because the snow emergency would end, so. The odds of it being something that would be permanent and unoperable or permanent and not fixable is pretty darn low, so we just, we didn't worry about it last time because of that specific reason. It's when the vehicles are left in one spot for periods of time, periods of time, periods of time, and there's no remedy that's been, that's been, uh, come to agreement with, I guess, so. But you're talking specifically for snow.
Yeah.
Soon as the snow's done, the vehicle would move back to where it was before it snowed, in theory. But yeah, we can amend, we can amend something.
To, I think, to speak specifically to it. Like moving forward with things like that, then, you know, if we say there's a snow ordinance, you put it on Facebook, like this isn't gonna be obviously enforced during the snow emergency, this, it was just a question.
Yeah, makes sense. Council?
I mean, I'll just also say, our emails were put out on Facebook and I did have six people contact me, which was pretty impressive, it's the most I think I've ever received of anything, uh, council discussion related and all six were um, appreciative of the start of code enforcement. So I did not receive personally any negative um, feedback at this point. I, I tried to make sure I was vocal that I was open to all feedback and like I said, I got six that came in, but they were all um, quietly appreciative of that. So I feel like we're on the right track as long as we can continue to make a discussion and, and that sort of thing. Um, it, it seems like, and, and Brad had posted in that same thread, I believe, you know, we're doing what we're legally required to do, uh, but we wanna do it in a way that does not feel gross, uh, and it seems like that message is getting out. Um, so that was really promising, so it's time to share that I got, I did get a lot of feedback and it was good.
No, thank you both for chiming in on that. I seen it after the fact and was gonna say something, but it was kind of a moot point at that point, so. I will allow a quick question and we may not have an answer for it.
I'm just curious why the first step is to contact Harrison.
Yeah.
Because earlier in these discussions, it was Harrison was not going to have to run contact with citizens on that. And Harrison really doesn't have any interpretative authority, correct? I mean, he, he reads the ordinance and he feels that what he observes is violation, that he writes it up. So if there's any question as to his interpretation, I mean, as interpretation, it's gonna be his interpretation. If a citizen thinks that interpretation is wrong, shouldn't that go to city staff or?
It does, it does. That's the second step. It's just a touch point with Harrison to reaffirm and make sure that they're on the same page and then the next step is to go to the city staff and that is what we agree would be the process in the contract that we have there.
He's, he's not, he's not going to yea nay the, the violation, it's, if there's any.
As far as. So hypothetically, oh, go ahead, sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So hypothetically, if there's trailers that are parked and there's questions about the remedy for the trailers, his answer would be here's what the code says, the next step is to contact city hall. So that would be the remedy that Harrison would have is to direct them back to city hall. But he volunteered to be the first point of contact just to clarify anything in writing that may be confusing.
That also frees up, that also frees up our city staff who are also very busy.
It may just be a misinterpretation of the letter and he can clear that up without taking city time, because we paid him to do it already.
And so, but if a citizen went straight to city staff, would the city staff work?
No, they, they take care of it.
They're not gonna tell them to.
Yeah, yeah, it's a small town thing, we'll take care of it, but. We just wanna make sure that everybody goes through the same process, so there's no bias within the process.
It just doesn't seem like a value added step, just.
Fair.
Anything else?
I think Angie covered some of it and I just wanted to, I mean reaffirm why we're doing it too, right? I mean, we talked about it multiple times now. It's, it's something that's been brought to us by the constituents, the people that live in the city, the, the majority of uh, folks are asking us to do it. You mentioned the requirements, there are Iowa codes that require us to have codes and code of ordinance and maintain them. The clarification seems to be around the letter that people are getting or the concerns is that there's some type of a monetary fine or that they're going to be assessed to find the, the, the letter, the violation itself does not carry a monetary fine.
Conversation.
Right, it's a conversation starter, it's an education piece. And it's something that we can use as discovery. Now, if the issue isn't remedied, fines can be applied at some point for this, for the codes, for the ordinances, per state laws, all that fun stuff and abatements can take place, but, um, that's not the goal. The goal isn't to get it to that level, the goal is to work to find a solution and the best example I can give, and I think we've talked about this already, is when code enforcement was ran a couple of years ago by a code enforcement officer, I think it was roughly fifteen properties on well, west of Grant, that were gonna have to get violated because they didn't have paved driveways. So instead of violating fifteen people for unpaved driveways, that didn't make any sense. It went back to the council, the council said, yep, we need to grandfather some things in, let's do some common sense for a small town. And those, those were grandfathered in and not required to be paved, because asking people to sell property or whatever to pave driveways was just not a remedy that we, we were interested in and it wasn't fair. I assume that there will be some commonalities that take place again. The snow ordinance question's a great one, a lot of people need to get their vehicles off the street, uh, with extra cars, so we, we can address those as they come up. Um, but getting a letter is an educational opportunity, it's not, it's not, hey, you're doing something wrong and we hate you now. No, we're all part of a community, we agreed to live here, we agreed to the rules when we did it. The, the phrase like, you know, rat bastards and threatening to throw flaming things at our homes and, and things like that. Great, you can keep saying that, but it doesn't dissuade us from doing what we're legally required to do, even if it's unpopular. Um, we're still going to work with the community, it's, it's an education piece if more than anything, um. Quick Google search using some A I tools, we have almost twenty-three hundred less codes and ordinances than the bigger cities in the metro area that everybody lives in, um. Obviously, they're a lot bigger, they have a lot more, a lot more rules than we do, so to say that we're trying to become one of them, the one that's always cited as Ankeny. Yeah, they had almost twenty times more than we did or, or more, um, things that they, their residents, you know, volunteer to adhere to when they live there. So this isn't about anyone feeling like they're better or worse than anyone else, I keep hearing that on Facebook as well. So this isn't about anyone feeling like they're better or worse than anyone else. I keep hearing that on Facebook as well and different people. Uh, this is just all of us who have agreed to live here and I keep saying it over and over again. It's a community. We want a small town. Well, the small town process is let's have a conversation and try to figure it out. Share our email addresses online. We're open on Facebook. My cell phone number, if anybody wants it, it's out there. I, I don't hide from it. We can answer those questions, but compliance matters and it, it isn't about jacking up property values. Things can get assessed and we can take more money. It has nothing to do with that. We don't set the assessments. That's the county that sets the assessments. So having nicer properties, making the houses worth more money. Appraisals and assessments are two different things and none of them are impacted by code enforcement. Um, the city ordinances, yeah, code, some things need to be updated and this is a great tool to do that. And then we get the question, why hasn't this been done in the past? Why does it feel like you guys are coming in here with your brand new council and doing all this stuff now? You know, there's a lot of reasons why historically code enforcement might not have been done. Limited resources. Elkhart's a small town. We've had a constrained staff for years since, I think the first calendar year, uh, in my six years where we maintained the same staff for the entire calendar year, um, which is great and same council for that entire calendar year. That's, that's the stability that we've been working towards. Uh, since I, yeah, we made some changes a couple of years ago. Um, we're focusing on education over penalties. That's another thing. We tried to educate through or enforce through education like Brad talked about for a couple of different years. Well, that didn't work. It didn't always get things cleaned up, but it worked on a pretty broad level. It just wasn't as specific as it needed to be. Some other limitations were staffing and training. We needed someone to help us focus on code enforcement. And Harrison's contract is pretty fair. And then most importantly, community feedback. This isn't five people, six people sitting up here saying, hey, we want things done our way. No, we all represent different sides of town. Right? Different times of living in town, different tenure of being here, and we've all been asked. You just gave an example, Angie, two seconds ago. The community feedback is there. The community support is there. And there's always been rules. They just haven't been necessarily followed. So we're trying to work and do that. And the commitment is we're dedicated to a fair, consistent enforcement. This isn't about special favors. This isn't about letting somebody who works for the city or has privilege with the city or has done services for the city or volunteered for the city. They, they're going to operate under the same exact, uh, process as everybody. And if that's ever found to be untrue or somebody's looking for special favors, it will be brought to our attention and we'll have to deal with it. But at this time, there's going to be some angry people. We get that, but don't be angry that you got the violation. Um, help us help you fix it. Like let's talk about it. And if it doesn't make sense anymore, if that ordinance or code has been outgrown by the city, we can have a discussion about that. And if the council, who's, two of them are up for election in November, that, that'll be how we figure that stuff out. So we'll work together to do it and, and be sure to share those emails. Be sure to share that feedback that you're getting, positive or negative, because it's going to help us discover things like Brad, you brought the snow ordinance up. That's my long-winded way of saying we're all in this together. There isn't one person or one group of people who thinks they're better than anyone else. We're tired of having our homes threatened and our families called names and stuff behind our back. It's just stupid. Or what do we, 50 bucks a meeting? Like we're not up here doing this for money or because we think we're better than anybody. We're just trying to help. And it's a tax on our city staff to have to deal with messages. Yet after hours messages at 5:30 on a Friday and then get cussed at because we didn't reply by eight o'clock on Saturday morning? Come on, man. That's not a small town. Don't say you want a small town and then treat people like they're assholes. It sucks. Because we're trying to help. It is life, but it, it's at the same time, we're trying to cater to everybody, which is impossible, but yeah, we're just getting a little tired of it because it takes, it takes a lot of effort to run the town. Um, effort we're all willing to put in and have been for quite a while and we're excited to continue to do it. But don't be offended if we don't reply to your nasty shit anymore because it's getting, it's getting old.
Dan, thank you, Mr. Portis. Uh, on to number 10, reports of elected officials, city staff and standing committees. Jill, we'll start with you.
Um, Midwest Way story did not meet. They didn't, they, uh, didn't have enough on their agenda. So we canceled the meeting. And the cemetery board is a cogit, so I'm not really going to hang you to report. Other than the cemetery board, they're trying to put some new plots in over, um, at the cemetery. And there was a tile line that's fixed out there, but I'm still concerned that there could be too much water in that area. I could plot, put more plots there. So I do feel that we need to take seriously and, uh, reach out to engineering or just have somebody check it over before we just put something in and have issues. That's my two cents on it.
Yep. Make sure to stay in touch with Chip and everything and Katie as well and whatever, whoever we need to, um, phone call or follow up with and double check. I did the email you had, you had sent Saturday, Sunday, whatever it was. So this has been replied of what Katie had said. Um, the chip has updated and everything. I know, I agree with your concerns. Um, you know, I've been out there. I've seen, it was last year. I've seen how it pools up there. Now that was before the tile line got fixed. Um, but I want to make sure that before we start to expand that, that that's not going to be an issue. So.
Well, I think, like I said, you know, Chip had mentioned that they had an engineer out there. Had an engineer out there a long time ago and it's like $400,000 to fix that area. I'd like to find that information, see what they collected for information or whatever. But, uh, I just don't want to throw stuff in and then just have floating caskets or worms because that's serious issue. That's my question.
Angie.
Uh, I'm going to let Katie, uh, speak to Parks because I was not at the Parks meeting and she was. The only other thing I had was, uh, at the festival. I did spend some time talking with the school board. Um, thanked them profusely for coming out. Uh, that was part of a conversation earlier that a bunch of us had had with them is trying to build that relationship more and make sure that the Elkhart voices are heard and everything, right? School related and it seemed like they were having a good time. I saw a number of people over there talking to them at different points. So I was very appreciative to see, uh, the school board take action on the things that we had asked them to do and talk to them about, and that felt really good. So.
Okay. So with the superintendent line that morning as well at the parade lineup, a little more direct, I threw up some shade and thank everyone Elkhart was. So, and for showing up, so.
I was next.
He, he took that in stride. So, but, uh, no, uh, just kind of rolling into it, you know, sounds like the festival went well, parade went well, everything went well with that. No issues. Uh, stopped talking with a couple of deputies beforehand. Uh, they had sent me, uh, we exchanged phone numbers just in case we needed, uh, City Hall for a cooling center or this after hours for a cooling center. Cause if nobody had noticed, it was quite warm that they, um, no issues, no medical things that they said that I'm aware of was that they were aware of. So that's good. Um, no issues with that. So, um, no, it sounds like everything went well on that front. Um, as far as parks related things, uh, there was a conversation about, uh, I guess mulch getting put over, uh, some requests and some conversation about mulch getting put in over at Third Point Park. Um, I get in Katie's report, that was slated to have been done sometime next week. But, but for an email with Ron, it's now mid-August or so, was he wanting to put some tile lines in? Uh, I guess I'll, I'll look to either you two or, or you, since you're my public works guy. I guess, uh, I'm just looking for a little bit of feedback of where the tile line, uh, need or desire is coming from. Is that been, uh, is that been budget? Do we, have we planned for that? Is that an emergency? Don't need an answer right now, but just looking for some more insight on where that's coming from. It's the first I'm hearing of it needing done. And if it's been mentioned before, I apologize, but, um, just wanting to get that kind of, get that going, uh, because it's not looking that great over there. And that's unfortunate for our premier park. So, um, that's what I've got on that end for right now. So. It's Campbell. I'll pass it over to you.
Did a brief tour of the water treatment plant this morning. Went up and I flew my drone to the top of the water tower to make sure the caps are still shut after our, uh, recent storms that we've had and they were shut. So. Uh, Ron and Riker continue to work on issues associated with, uh, just the growing pains of the new water treatment plants. Um, sounds like everything's good with that. Uh, Tom flips ager quite often. Uh, with the recent storms, um, I talked to Ron, not a whole lot of damages, a few tree branches that were down. Uh, water's slow going, uh, and your crews are electric. Uh, so before the rain, talking about infiltration in the sewer system, um, so he gave me some numbers on this. So before, uh, rain events, we're looking at 66 gallons per minute. Post rain events, we're at 176 gallons per minute. So, and then, uh, non-rain events, and then in the winter time, we're looking at 30 to 35 gallon per minute. So in the past solutions, they've had cameras, the scope sewer lines, try to figure out what the infiltration is coming from. Um, because we know the old clay tile is cracked and water seeping in. So I think that that's something that we need to look at best that we can with limited budget for public works and stuff like that. Um, that's also, uh, Ron's voice's opinion on, uh, possibly looking at having lines on the west side of town, uh, rewind.
Rewind.
Yeah. So. And that's it.
There were some quotes worked up in the past for re-sleting a bunch of the lines.
Yeah.
I still don't know when they would have done that. Whereas on his priority list, that fell, but I'm pretty sure that was done a couple of times.
But, uh, lift stations, he said, we're doing good with all the rain. I know in the past we've had some rising events in the lift stations, but they're good this time around. So, yeah. Yep. Yep. We're good.
Um, yeah, that already said, most of my piece for the night. I'm tired now. Uh, there was, there's two open seats on the school board as well this November. So if anybody's interested, um, there's been some talk in the past about having someone from Elkhart run. And then there's been years where five people from Elkhart ran all together. So there's interest there from anybody that's listening to this or anybody in the room. If more than one person's worth of interest, have a conversation and maybe work together. Try to get one of the seats instead of not getting any of them. Uh, that'd be great. Uh, gas station, I talked to the developer this afternoon. They have a meeting tomorrow and then, uh, he will be stopping through town to meet with Katie and I, uh, sometime in the afternoon to give us a pretty, pretty comprehensive update on where they're at and kind of what some of the more recent slowdowns have been. Um, a lot of stuff out of his control, but at the same time, you know, we're, we're going to have to discuss next month about, um, extending the development agreement. We've talked about that in the past. It's pretty standard issue for cities to extend. It is what it is, but he'll give us some good updates tomorrow and then I'll be able to share that. Maybe tomorrow evening it'll be.
Very good. Katie?
Yeah. So I'll.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were done. My apologies. I was, and then I remembered that. Now Katie.
Um, I'll just touch on a couple of items. So the water treatment plant, um, there's been some significant improvements. Our ammonia levels drop, are still dropping. Um, but we don't have like a set date on when it'll be at a sufficient level yet. Um, but the startups for wells two and three are complete as events stated. And, um, I don't know if you've noticed, but they've been working on the demolition of the interior of the old plant for this week. Um, and then today I did send out a notice to you all, um, they're going to be flushing hydrants periodically to, uh, improve the chlorine levels. So kind of trying to peel off the coats in the main lines and improve that. Um, yes, planning and zoning did not meet, but, um, I just wanted to touch on the notice that we received from Ankeny regarding their newest annexation that they, uh, plan to complete. Um, Mike can touch on more of it too, if he wants, but, um, there is a corner of it that we do have included in our future land use plan. Um, so just wanted to make you aware of that. But I do plan to connect with, um, someone in their planning department soon. So we can, because I know it's one of our goals to get an annexation agreement of some sort with them. So just try to talk, talk to them about that and get, see if we can get something figured out. Um, a parks update. So they are holding, uh, their children's event this Wednesday here. They're going to have rock painting, kindness, rock painting, uh, friendship bracelet making. So that's a, that'll be a fun little event for them. Um, and then.
We had several signed up. What was the number? Thirty something?
Yeah.
Oh, that's pretty good.
Yeah.
I don't, that's never too late. Okay.
So, um, they'll have that on Wednesday night. And then I know, uh, Steph was planning, she's got this bingo card game that they're planning to advertise online, uh, just kind of encouraging kids in the community to complete acts of kindness. So that will be a fun, um, event to host. And then a couple other things, they, they discussed holding another puzzle Palooza this fall. And then, um, we had some discussion regarding a community garden, um, with hopes of possibly doing something as far as community beautification on those, those lines. Um, cemetery board, yeah, uh, Chip brought to me the additional plots for interest. Um, so I will do some investigating into that to see what we need to do if we want to go that route to add more plots. Um, and they do meet in August, on August 21st, if anyone's interested. Um, the tree I wanted to touch on, I know Ron had mentioned, um, there's a resource out there for communities for a tree plan for tree assessment. So, uh, we are on the urban forestry program. We're on their list for next year for them to come assess our community and provide a tree management plan. So that is exciting.
I think DNR does that too, because I swear I've just seen on Facebook, another community, they use Alman or Sheldar or something that utilized DNR, who's a program.
I think it is the DNR. I think they're involved.
Together.
Yeah. Cause I reached out to a gal with the DNR and she reverted me to the forestry program.
Yeah, uh, yeah, two gentlemen. One of them was named Timo, I believe. That's a nickname that was out there. So. Yes.
Um, and then we were awarded, um, a grant for $2,500 for batter's box reinforcement panels at Memorial Park. Uh, so I was kind of working with Jeff Pardon with ADS Little League back in February. And this was one of the things that he said they could use. So that is an exciting resource, uh, we'll have at the ball fields now. Um, and then our CDs, a couple of our CDs matured in June. So that was exciting. We took in about $6,000 from those CDs maturing. And then I did want to re- remind you all that we have a special meeting tomorrow night at City Hall for the comp plan work session. So.
Dan.
Well.
Welcome back.
Yeah. So I'm just playing catch up and I think that this will be here on June 30th. Catch up.
Did everything go well with the, uh?
It's good. I was ready to come back though. I mean, it's always nice to go. It's nice to go.
Excellent. Congratulations again. Mike, anything to chime in on?
Uh, the state of planning doing did not meet. Um, and yes, I did see that in the paper when Ankeny published that they were having a public hearing on an annexation along the east side of the interstate. Um, which I had been told previously was going to happen. Um, and I saw it and I said, oh yes, there it is. Um, and I told Katie about it. Uh, it does overlap part of what's on our land use plan. Uh, but then again, their comprehensive plan, their land use plan overlaps ours in some places. So that was an area that both cities had marked out for their future land use. Uh, my thought on it is that we can go in and try to oppose Ankeny on that. My guess is it will be a snow. Um, just because the majority of that land, those people voluntarily are being annexed. Plus Ankeny will make the case that they could provide service to us in a timely manner, which we at this time cannot because of the cost. Uh, but I, I did in the email to her suggest that the city needs to be proactive on talking to the landowners to the west here about the possibility of annexing them into the city. Um, just basically defending our own, you know, our own territory, our own, our own plans going forward. So I don't know what kind of conversations have been held with the top of the owners, but we should be doing that.
So the initial conversations have been, have been had, um, with Volz Farm. Um, and their request was a tax analysis based on what they're paying right now currently through the county and what we're paying through the city. And then that was provided back to the developer that's working with them on their land exchanges for the industrial park. So I know that he's had a chance to look at that, but the answer we got back was that there really wasn't any interest. Uh, but they might be revisited again at the end of the year. So I assume further conversations won't hurt, but at the same time, you know, respecting kind of what we were told, that's where we're at there. Uh, as far as the folks on the south side, um, I haven't had a chance to speak with them yet.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Captain.
But I would like to. As soon as they're willing.
There's nothing else. On to number 11. Any other business?
I had one thing on Jill's deal for you and there, they say you're worried about water out there in the cemetery. I've seen a lot of people buried out there since I moved here in 62. These fellow kids. There's plots out next to the 126. They had to use the backhoe to hold the vault down, put the dirt back in the hole. Cause it flowed the vault out with the casket in it.
Okay. That's what I'm thinking.
And two there. Okay. Back in the day, we had Lester Morris put a tile in there on the north end of cemetery. Cause of places that floated, the caskets were in the east, the west sections of the cemetery, which you think are high. That's where it had most of the water because of the ground tape, water table. So they could put tiles. So they could put tiles and stuff in, in there. You gotta deal with the sisters and not with Mr. Mathis because he's got a big grudge against the city. And they're all huge. And secondly, if you're gonna meet with farmers, nothing against you, Brad, but I think you better meet with them in there. I know one farmer out there has not been approached, but I do know he's been approached by a very wealthy person. And if it goes with that person in there, the city Elkhart will have a snowball's chance and a hot oven to get.
No, I'm, I'm willing to, you know, reach out and, and meet and everything. And I think that's what we should do is.
Just stop. Just drive in the driveway and stop. You want his name, number, get ahold of me in there.
Sure.
You've got to go talk to them because he owns a chunk and I know the other ones too do. You gotta remember, it only takes one person in that section.
Sure.
That one person's already there.
Sure.
Nope, he owns it.
Yeah, if you wanna send me in any information you got.
From the south of that, he owns a mile long and three quarters a mile west.
Yeah, understood. If you wanna send me in any information you got, I'd be more than happy to. Appreciate that, Mr. Adams, so. I'm, I'm all for respecting as far as with developers and this and that, and I agree to his point as far as not pushing, but at the same time, I understand your point as well as. No, exactly. You know, I don't, I don't wanna push an issue that's we've been told no and then my, me showing up.
You know, hard to ask.
Exactly, exactly. No, I'm all.
And I know for a fact, absolute fact, the ones on the south side of that and the ones on the west side of that in there, they were asked by the last mayor and they would all agree for it and the council, nope, don't want anything to do with it. Well, that was the wrong thing to say.
No, I'll get with you or if you wanna send it to me directly, either or, so.
You've got to go talk to them.
On the cemetery thing, quick too. So we looked into adding plots to that years ago and everything he just said is what we found as well. It doesn't seem like even if you refixed the drainage on the east end of that, it's really gonna matter a lot. There was even talk at one point of essentially bringing in dirt and raising it all and trying to level it and the engineering costs were gonna be extremely prohibitive and it probably wasn't gonna fix any of the issues, so. Yeah, if you wanna share some information of some sisters.
We got dirt right out here. You got weeds growing up six foot tall.
Well, I'm not talking about dirt. I'm talking about, you keep mentioning the sisters. I, yeah, we, we need to probably go down that road.
We agree it's that we shouldn't put any plots in that.
I wouldn't say it. We, we can have a conversation about it, but it, it wasn't a positive finding in the past when we've looked into it. And I don't know why that would change just because of a little bit better drainage, because this, a lot of that out there, correct me if I'm wrong again. It was like really good duck hunting land, right? Because it was swampy and marshy. That's what I'm saying. So the whole place was built on a bloody swamp.
Information um, from when you guys checked into it last time, like, is there a report that
I have no idea where.
Somebody has that.
Our city staff would have.
We could say, hey.
V and K might have been used. You could, we could check with V and K.
Yeah, he said that V and K hasn't looked at it yet, so.
This was years ago and.
And as.
Those people no longer work here.
As we've come to learn that.
Before that, who are inhering firm was before V and K?
V and K's been here since.
It would have been, it would have either been them or, I don't know, honestly, I, I think it's irrelevant. The point is it would have to be re-explored again with the cost of money.
Right.
And we're not, it wasn't something we budgeted for in 2026 anyway, so.
The reason the city picked up that junk ground was to put in a small row across there to the west, to the, to the east of that east driveway. But the agreement was, and I was on the council when we got it, we got it from RC and he sold it to the city for a dollar because he's planting crops in it. And it was easier to mow it than it was have crops in it. In there. That's the only reason we got.
Fair enough. It's wet. They're good. Thank you for all the information. There's no other business? Number 12, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Say it.
Claire Schaefer, family for.
Hi.
Thank you, everybody.